It is now 5:30. Welcome to Lamore City Council. 429 C Street, March 19, 2019, times 5:30. Going back to study session. First of all, we can go to public comment. At this time, it's reserved for members of the audience to address the city council on items, not on the agenda. Do I see any? I don't see any? Okay, now into study session, SS-1. South Fort Kings Groundwater Sustainability, Sustainability Act update. Mr. Olson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So tonight, Amir Hussain is here with the South Fort Kings GSA to kind of give a brief update on where we're at currently on getting to our groundwater sustainability plans. Turn it over.
Thank you, Nathan. As Nathan said, I'm Amir Hussain. I'm with Geoscientic Consultants. We are the engineering consultants for the South Fort Kings GSA. We appreciate the opportunity to come here and address the council tonight. This is a big part of our outreach efforts is to make sure that all of, there are as many people as we can notify about what's going on and keep you up to date as well. In particular, the city of Lamore is an integral part of the GSA and we appreciate your participation. Nathan has been wonderful to work with in terms of, he sits on our technical advisory group, has been very helpful in the information he's provided. So thank you, Nathan. Councilmember Brown actually sits on our board and has been a big part of some of the discussions that we've had. So thank you for that as well. With me tonight is Bob Anderson, who is one of our principal hydrogeologists. I'm going to ask Bob to kind of step in and answer some questions later today as depending on what you might ask. So just to be clear, our role is we represent the South Fort Kings GSA. I've brought a map here with me and I'm sorry if I'm going to move away from the microphone just a bit, but this area here, it's the top left there is the orange, that's the South Fort Kings GSA.
So that's Grangeville area, sort of like?
Yes.
Island District?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're going to have a short presentation tonight and then we're going to answer any questions you might have. I'm going to start using some acronyms and some jargon, so stop me at any moment if I start getting too far into that and ask me to clarify. So I would, you know, sometimes we, those of us that are living something like this day in and day out for the last year, we start thinking that everybody knows what we're talking about, right? So I think I went through and I tried to define as many of the terms as I could. I'll keep this fairly short and give you, you know, an idea of exactly where we're at with Sigma, what the impacts of Sigma might be to your community and the general area, a little bit about the GSA itself, the development process of the groundwater sustainability plan, that's what GSP means, and schedule, and then how to stay involved as we move forward. So a little bit about Sigma. So the law was actually passed, well Sigma itself, I should say, is defined as the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. It's a combination of some bills that were passed by the legislature back in 2014. And it provides the local agencies a framework to have local control of how we're going to achieve sustainability of the groundwater. And I think that's one item that I should be clear on is we are talking groundwater. Sigma has no effect on the surface water use in this area and does not affect surface water rights in any way. So a framework to define groundwater basins in a sustainable manner. We're going to define sustainability here in a few slides, so bear with me. The GSAs are required to submit a plan by January of 2020, which is coming up. I'll be talking a little bit about where we're at on the plan. And then we have to achieve sustainability by 2040. And again, I'm going to define exactly what we mean by sustainability. All right, so some of the impacts, oops. That didn't work. Now I skipped ahead. Some of the impacts of Sigma in this area, some of the challenges that we're facing in this area. All of you are probably well aware, we've got declining water levels, we've got to figure out how we're going to handle flood flows in the future, subsidence concern. Subsidence is essentially when we de-water an area, we start pumping groundwater out of an area, and I'm giving you a very simple definition, but the soil or the ground elevation continues to drop as well. And we're seeing some of that across our GSA and as well southeast as Corcoran. We've got to coordinate with the surrounding sub-basins. So if you look, I'm not sure how well you can see some of this, and I've actually got another map. I'll show you where some of the sub-basins are on the other map. Economic impacts. As we start to figure out and change how we're pumping groundwater in this area, what kind of economic impacts might that have? And then finally, as we start to implement projects and other things, management actions for Sigma, we've got to be able to pay for those as well. So the boundaries of the plan. This figure kind of shows the sub-basin that we're involved in, the Tulare Lake sub-basin, and the five different GSAs that surround us and that we're all part of. And we're going to write one plan for the entire sub-basin. You've got Mid-Kings, the Hanford area to our east, you've got the El Rico GSA to the south of us, and to the southwest Kings GSA and Tri-County down there. So we're all working together to write one plan. That covers our basin and then we're surrounded by five other basins. The West Side, which is essentially the Wessons Water District, the Kings to the north, Coia and Tully, the two basins directly to the east of ours. That's north and south Tulare County, and then Kern County to below us as well. And we've got to, we've got to make sure that what we're doing isn't going to impact them and they've, and vice versa. What they're doing isn't going to impact us. So our member agencies for our GSA are the city of Lamore, Kings County, the Empire West Side Irrigation District, Stratford Irrigation District, and the Stratford PUD. I'm actually going to move, use the other map. This is a blow-up of our GSA. It kind of shows some of the other water agencies, including some of the privates. Some of the private mutual companies are out there, Lamore Canal, for example, on there. Again, Sigma does not regulate ground, surface water in any way, but since they, is a close interaction between surface water and groundwater, we, you know, we're of course including them in the discussions. The GSA right now, it's a joint powers authority, and we are moving along with the preparation of our GSP. So our role really is to look out for this area, to make sure that the items that end up in the plan are reflective of what's actually happening in our area and what we, the type of actions that we want to take place moving forward. It's a plan, so it's going to spell out a number of actions that we can take. The items that affect us are different than the items that affect El Rico, for example. They've got a much higher subsidence rate in that part of the basin than we do up here. So we don't want to be limited by something that they might be doing and vice versa. They don't want to be limited by what might affect us. But we've all got to work together and, like I said, it is one plan. You know, some of the bullet items that I wrote on here are local projects and local management actions. When I say local management actions, a management action might be how the Kings County decides that they're going to permit any new wells. A change to that would be considered a management action as opposed to saying we're going to actually build a recharge basin, which would be, you know, a good example of a project. Any questions so far? If you want to, okay.
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah.
If I may, have you guys reached out to Kings County Board of Supervisors?
We have.
Doug Verboen, he's that area?
Yeah, so Joe Nevs actually sits on the GSA board. So Supervisor Nevs is on our board and Supervisor Verboen is on our technical advisory group.
Okay.
So there, the Kings County is very active in our discussions.
Okay, and why I'm asking this is, Mr. Verboen, he was elected on that side, South Bend.
Yeah.
And so saying that is, what have you guys done to reach out to them? I mean?
Specifically to the Board of Directors?
Mm-hmm.
Well, since Joe Nevs sits on our board, you know, and Doug is, so they've been, they've been reporting back to the Board of Supervisors on activities that we're proposing in this, in this plan.
Okay.
There is a public meeting scheduled with the Board of Supervisors or planned to be scheduled with them, hopefully in April, but we haven't, we haven't nailed that date down at this point.
Okay, how's the South Fort work with the Island District? Because I remember going to a meeting and wanting to hear you guys out about, you guys weren't getting water at one time. At the Islands, it was at the Island School. Is that making sense? They had a?
The Island School, I'm sorry, I'm not.
So that's, that would be northwest of here out by Flint 21st? That's the island out, that area?
Island, yeah, Island District. It was the Island School out there. We was having meetings every once in a while. There was, they was wondering why aren't they getting the water and stuff like that. And so you're talking about the wells that we need.
Right.
And then we're talking about, over in Stratford, they're not, they're not having any issues, but over in South Fort, seems like there are some issues.
So Mayor Neal, I think what you're talking about there is the, the lack of water in the Kings River down there?
Mm-hmm.
So we're not the function of the groundwater sustainability agency?
They don't, they're not involved with that.
We don't touch, we don't touch surface water. It's just about the groundwater. And I believe, you know, we had seven years that water never got out there. So two years ago was the first time I believe water hit the island in about seven years, if I'm not mistaken.
Wow.
So that's, that's kind of separate, separate issues. The only thing we take into account as we're devising this plan is what we can expect for surface water deliveries to see if it's going to offset pumping. But any plan we come up with is specific to the groundwater and how much groundwater we leave behind in the ground.
Thank you.
The, that is, you know, I'm actually glad you kind of said that because one of the questions has always been is, as you start to move water around or reduce water, what kind of impacts is that going to have in some of the communities? And that is definitely something that, that we are considering. We want to minimize those types of impacts, especially on domestic wells and
Very good.
You know, people, people who are relying on that. Water impacts as well as, you know, economic impacts as well to them, so. Hey, Charlotte. So Charlotte Gahkoo, I'm sorry, was, Charlotte actually runs, or she is responsible for the South Fort Kings in her role, and she's with KRCD right now. She's a water manager for KRCD. So she's acting as staff for the South Fort Kings GSA. All right, so let me, let me move along here. So I promise you, we would start to, start to define what sustainability actually means under this plan, right? And the way the state and the act actually define it is that it's the management of groundwater supplies in a manner that can be maintained in planning and implementing phases without causing undesirable results. So now your question is, okay, what do we mean by undesirable results? And this is what they actually define as undesirable results. So it's the lowering of groundwater, it's significant unreasonable reduction in groundwater storage, seawater intrusion, you know, degrading water quality, unreasonable land subsidence, and then depletions of surface water that have benefi, that are interconnected with groundwater there. I think the key to all of this, though, is you can see the word significant and unreasonable in several of these definitions. And we, as a, as a sub-basin, get to define what we think is significant and unreasonable.
Are we currently experiencing any of these indicators?
So groundwater levels are definitely dropping and have, you know, through the drought, we've seen significant, not significant, let me use a different term because I don't want to use the same one, but we've seen water levels have decreased across the GSA. That's not to say, you know, that's not to say that, that we could not accept more if we, as we start to write the plan.
I guess my question is, is there any areas that have substantial subsidence that are, just jump out at you, they're big areas?
Not, subsidence has been probably a couple feet in this area. The Caltrans did a survey along 198, and we're looking at somewhere in the two or so, is that right, Bob? Two feet or so across?
Depends how long.
Yeah, depends on how long you define that, right? But subsidence is not as much of a concern in this area. We are seeing a little bit along the river. It's not going to be, I think what's going to drive unreasonable, significant and reasonable probably is going to be the lowering of groundwater levels in our GSA as opposed to subsidence, which is going to be a much bigger concern for some of the folks to the east.
Okay, so we could start looking at the quality of water being impacted?
Yeah, you could.
Versus?
Yeah.
Ground conditions, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We don't want
Thank you.
We don't want water levels to drop too much out here either and start to have, you know, maybe domestic wells or things go dry. So there's, there are, you know, those are some of the items that we're looking at right now.
Okay.
I have another quick question.
Sure, sure.
Dealing with groundwater, have we ever taken note in going into recharge basins? That's been a delivery for us so far in other cities. They've been talking about when, in illegal cities, they're talking about recharge basins, even in areas where they have housing, putting basins, basin ponds in there as well.
Right.
And that recharges the water for, we don't have to dig so far for water. And if you dig so deep for water, then you have arsenic, what you're dealing with. So it's a devil at sword. So how would you deal with that?
So, so that's a good question because there's only certain parts. Most of the north part along the river are areas that we could potentially recharge, but we do have several clay layers. And so if you're going to start to recharge, you want to make sure that you're able to get the water into a aquifer that you can actually use, right?
Absolutely.
The pumping that's occurring below the Corcoran Clay right now is not going to, the surface recharge is not going to impact that for
Years?
Decades.
Okay.
And we, and there is a significant amount of pumping. In fact, much of the subsidence that you were asking about occurs because of pumping below the Corcoran.
Okay.
And so we are looking at areas, I think what's potentially very likely to occur is that we may end up having to look at projects outside of our GSA where recharge can actually occur, and then work out some deals where we get to share some of that benefit of that project outside of our GSA. As you go to the, as you go to the south of our GSA down towards Nevada there, all that area down there is fairly, there's a lot of clay material near the surface, and you're not going to see a lot of recharge in any of that area down there.
Okay.
If you look at losses along the river, you've got losses pretty, you know, some pretty good losses on the river until you get right around Lamore and then, and then the losses on the river, you know, substantially less because it just, the soil conditions change quite a bit. But yeah, recharge and definitely capturing this flood flow is, is key. You know, that, I think that's going to be the, the key item is how can we capture more and more of that flood flow and not lose it, you know?
Any ideas?
That's the discussion that's going on right now. And in fact, one of the things I was going to say at the end was, we'd like to come back to this group and give you an update when the plan, and I'm going to, I'm going to touch upon that a little bit as to the, some of the schedules coming up. So let me, let me talk a little bit about the plan. I'm just not very good at this. It's me. Okay. So these are some of the key items that we are in the process of putting together on the plan. I'm not sure how well you can, all of you can read that. Well, you know what, I forgot to mention, we do have some printouts of this of anybody in the audience, and I'm sorry, I should have, I should have said that upfront. If anybody in the audience would like one, we do have some handouts available for you. But the key item here is the water budget. And the water budget, like any other budget, is what, what water's coming into the area and what water's leaving. So we've got, you know, we've got surface water that we're bringing in to the area from the river. We've got groundwater that we're pumping and using up, and then there's also the groundwater that's flowing beneath us and out into the Wessons area as well. That's a very, I'm simplifying all of these things. There's, it, you know, people could write a, you know, master thesis on groundwater flow in this area. But as you go around the circle, all of the, basically as we start to look at undesirable results, it starts to affect our water budget, and as we go around the circle, the idea here is that each of these is an iterative process. As we, as we look at one thing, we've got to adjust others as we go around there. We're going to monitor to make sure that we're not causing in, any undesirable results. We're going to be looking at water levels across the basin as we start to implement the plan in, into 2020. So the schedule on the, on the plan itself, the groundwater sustainability plan, two of the chapters have been prepared. There's a separate consultant who's under contract with the Mid-Kings GSA that's representing the entire sub-basin. They're writing one plan. Our role is to review chapters, to look out and give them input to represent the interests of South Fort Kings. They've prepared two chapters, the plan area and the basin setting. They're currently working on the other three bullet items that you see up there. The sustainable management criteria is essentially the sustainable goals that we're going to establish. If we said that water levels are dropping, at what level can, do we want that groundwater level to maintain at? So if we say elevation of X feet, that would be an example of a, of a criteria there. The monitoring network is self-explanatory. I mean, essentially, how are we going to monitor what water levels are doing over time? And then the projects management actions, you know, I talked about earlier, is what type of projects are we going to propose? If we're going to do a groundwater recharge basin, where would it be? You know, those types of things. A draft of the document right now is looking, we're looking at about August of this year.
Okay.
And the one thing I didn't put on here that I should have mentioned is the final document is due to the state by January 30th of 2020. Okay? So we'd like to come back to you as that public draft becomes available and maybe hit some of the key items, especially any items that might impact the city of Lamore in particular. So we, you know, we're not going to go through the whole, it's going to be, you know, three inches thick or whatever, but we want to go through and kind of identify some of those to help you out. And Nathan, of course, will be part of the stakeholders that are going to be reviewing this document. All right, how do we get involved? And I guess this goes for everybody in the audience too. The South Fort King meetings, the South Fort Kings GSA meetings are held the Thursday of every month, every other month, excuse me, although we are, look like we're going to go to a monthly because time's getting short between now and the, and the, the draft document is due. We do it right here in this, in this room. Our next meeting is actually this Thursday. And there's the link on the website. So if you go to the website, you can sign up and you can be notified of all the meetings. When we do presentations to the board with, Charlotte's staff also uploads those to our website as well to keep everyone informed. I'm going to leave that up there while we're talking to answer any questions to give anyone who's interested a chance to write that down.
I do have one more quick question.
Sure, sure, sure.
How could this potentially impact the citizens of Lamore in the future? Everybody's currently metered. Are there any drastic measures that might take place that go right along with this?
So the cities and municipalities will get their water. The idea of Sigma is not to reduce the waters going to the city or any of the municipalities. But there may be pumping limitations on the surrounding areas. So we may come back and say that, and I'm not going to say a number because the minute I say a number-
There could be pumping limitations on the city as well, right?
No, no, no. The idea is to give the city, or to get the city what they are going to need, but it is going to have an impact on everyone else, right? And that may mean potential economic impacts. It may mean if everyone else is limited, your, as you start to annex land and things like that, there may be some interactions there. We don't see, we don't see necessarily a direct impact, although some of the projects that may be come out of this plan may have an impact on the city. You know, it may, it may make sense for the city to say, okay, in the long term, we want to make sure that we've got a water supply for X number of people. In order to do that, we're going to have to build or be participate in a project that, that's going to provide water, you know, the long term.
Okay.
So if you ask me today what all the impacts are going to be, I'm not sure I can answer that. I don't know if, I'm looking at both of you and you're, you're-
I would say, I would say biggest role, I think, for the city is to partner in, on projects.
Yeah.
Urban recharge, as you mentioned, storage, those kinds of things are going to play a very key role in, in helping us develop sustainability.
Absolutely.
And I think that that's where you guys come in and roll that, the city of Lamore.
And everybody's participating, correct? There's, there's nobody that's not participating? Any cities, counties? Everybody's on it?
And within the South Fort Kings, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, for the most part, I think even in the surrounding neighborhoods, surrounding GSAs, I should say, yeah.
Okay, good.
You know, one of the things that, that may impact the city is maybe, is the city that starts to look at some management actions internally about, you know, doing actions that may continue to reduce water usage per capita in the city. What those might be is going to be up to this board, but anything, anything that we can do to reduce groundwater usage across the entire GSA is going to be beneficial to the, to everyone in the group.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm, I'm available to answer any other questions that you might have. No? Well, we have, you know, our contact information is out. We work with Nathan very closely, so if something does come up or if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to us and we'd be happy to answer it. And we'd like to come back, if you don't mind, one more time
Absolutely.
In the late
Fall.
Early fall timeframe and maybe give you an update on exactly what that plan actually says.
Is that what you was talking about for, is January 30th, 2020?
Yeah, so the public draft will be out roughly around August, plus or minus. As soon as that's out, we'll, we'll contact you guys to say, okay, when can we come back? And again, just do a short presentation on what the plan actually says and what potential impacts there might be specific to the city or, or where the city can participate.
I was trying to catch, I was trying to catch up with you. It was one real flow. Now, what was that in August, you said?
Yeah, let me, let me flip back to that slide.
Okay, thank you.
So the public draft roughly you're looking at is August of this year, and the final document is due to the state in January of 2020.
2020.
Yeah.
All right, got it. They don't have a date on August, or is this?
It's
You don't win?
It's tentative at best.
Okay.
[laughing]
No problem.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it.
As soon as
It's in August.
Yeah, as soon as we know, we will share with this group and, you know, Councilman Brown will probably know right away and let everybody, you know, let this group know. And as soon as, as soon as we have a date, we'll try to reschedule a meeting with you.
Okay.
All right?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, going into closed session. This item has been set aside for the city council to meet in closed session to discuss matters pursuant to government code section. to discuss matters pursuant to Government Code Section. Let me see if I got my mix. 549-56.9 D4. The mayor will provide an oral report regarding to the closed session at the next, at the next regular opening meeting. Thank you. Deal with me. Okay, we're going to go into a closed session conference with real property negotiation property. 245 East Street, APN 020053 slash 016, approximately 45 acres. Agency negotiator, Nathan Olson, City Manager, negotiating party, Ann Keys Trust, under negotiation price and terms. Two, conference with legal counsel anticipating litigations, Government Code Section 549-56.9. Government significant exposure of litigations pursuant of paragraph two or three of subdivision D of section 549-56.9. Two cases. Three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Government Code Section 549-56.9. D1, City of Lemoore versus Holly Underla Blair, case number 19C slash 0043. And when we go to acres, that will be point for five acres, point five acres. Okay? Any public comment on closed session? I see there's none. The time is 6:02. Adjourn. 7:30. Welcome to the Moore City Council chambers. Address will be 429 C Street, month March 19th, 2019. Call to order.
Yeah, so, the council has adjourned from closed session. The, there's nothing to report as this time. However, council still needs to address items one and two of the agenda. They have not done that. And so, we will readdress those items after the regular session meeting. So, we will readjourn to closed session following the regular session. And so, if you want to hang around and see if there's a report out afterwards, you're welcome to do so.
Okay, can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And as you remain standing, wait for the invocation of Pastor Kim.
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice.
Remain standing.
Oh, my Jesus, we come before you, Lord God, with humbled hearts. We thank you, Father God, for this great city. I pray, Father God, for our leaders that are standing here before us, Father God, and I ask that you would bestow upon them wisdom. I ask that you would bestow upon our mayor wisdom, because they have a heavy duty, Father God, Lord Jesus, because they represent us, Lord. I ask, Father God, that you would guide them in the way that they should go. Wherever you are not, Lord, we do not want to be there. So, Father God, I pray that each one, that you would speak to their hearts and you would minister to their hearts. You know their individual lives and you know the things that they go through. Father God, I ask that you would be with each, each member of the council. I pray, Father God, for everybody in this room, Lord, as they are here for a reason. And I ask you, Father God, that you would be with each soul in this place. I pray, Father God, that you would minister to each one. And Lord, you know the needs of their lives, of their hearts, and I ask that you would meet the need according to your will, my Jesus. I pray, Father God, for the fire department and for the, for the police department. And I ask, Father God, that your hand of protection be upon them, Lord God, that you would help them in their endeavors to serve this community, Father God. They are a light to us, Father God, and they are a shield to us, Father God. And I pray that you would help them, Lord Jesus, in everything they do, because it's dangerous, Lord. I ask, Father God, for your blessing to be upon this meeting. I ask, Father God, that you would be with every mouth, as you were with, with Moses's mouth and you were with Aaron's mouth. I ask, Father God, for you would be with the hearts and that you would let your love shine. I pray all of this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. I appreciate that prayer, that was awesome prayer. Okay, back to the agenda. Ms. Venegas, roll call.
Councilmember Blair. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Billingsley.
Here.
Mayor Neal.
Here. Thank you.
Agenda approval additions or deletions. Everyone go on to public comment. This time is reserved for members of the audience to address the council on items that interest that are not on the agenda. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mariella Childress. I reside at 895 Legacy Drive here in Lemoore. I've been a Lemoore resident for just about 21 years. I have a few things I wrote down on my way here. The majority of them are questions to you and asking for support. I recently took over the ownership of Yauser's Frozen Yogurt in town. It's located next to Save Mart. I'm asking for your support to keep that business going. The owner of Yauser's owned that store as well as one in Hanford. The store in Hanford was bought out by Starbucks. They paid a little money, so they took over the spot. And he was going to close the store in Lemoore. And being that I'm a mother of five and there's not too many places here in town to go, I took over the store and it's been a challenge, to say the least. So, I would appreciate your support in the community as well. I've offered Chief Smith and also the fire department, they can come throughout the day and get free yogurt. And I know it gets hot here, so you're all welcome to come, it's on the house. I also have the spot there where the farmer's ferry used to be. I have the, have had the keys since November last year. And my intention was to turn into a cycle bar, which is spinning and, you know, things like that. But, also, I spoke with insurance and because those bikes can have loose pieces, and as you know, the building has a lot of glass around. In conversation with the insurance company and an attorney, I'm waiting on that process. And if that doesn't work out, I would like to turn that place into a New York-style bakery. So, we'd have that going on there, hopefully. And I will speak with the city and talk about codes and all that stuff with Frank, my best friend. The other item I wanted to bring to your attention, I don't know if you, apart, is the builders. They're coming to our town, rushing the process of building these homes. I live pretty close to Mayor Neal at the Sagecrest Homes. And currently, all the, all my neighbors, including myself, are on a class action lawsuit against Walton Castanos. I don't know if you're aware of that. The homes are falling apart. I'm a disabled veteran. I purchased that home and a month after I purchased that house, we had to have the whole entire kitchen being redone. The floors are coming up, cracks everywhere, foundation issues. We had several different inspections coming through in the past two years. And it's, it's a disgrace. They came in here, they're building these beautiful homes-
Excuse me, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you about 30 more seconds. I'm going to give you, you over your time, but go ahead.
Okay, so I wanted to bring out that, that part. There's a huge class action lawsuit against Walton Castanos. Right now, I'm part of one of them. The other thing I wanted to ask you is the health, the economic development in Hanford. I went to them to ask for support as a small business here in town, money. There's no support, absolutely none. We're trying to survive. These, these real estate companies that own the mall here, I'm sorry, I know I'm out of time, are charging way too much money for rent. Sunny at the sushi table pays $6,500 a month for rent. I have to pay $2,800 per month for rent in that little tiny location. Maybe there's something the city can do to talk to these people and bring them down to our tiny little town where we're trying to survive and stay open or more businesses that go out of business. Sorry.
Thank you, Sumner, that's Mariella.
For sure.
No problem. Mr. Tom Reed?
Nope, he's, he's-
Okay, okay. Anyone else? I see there's none. Going on to ceremony and presentation, section one, no ceremony and presentations. Department and City Manager Report. Two dash one, Department and City Manager Report.
Good evening, Mayor Neal and councilmembers. So, we're going to start out with Fire Chief Bruce German. He'd like to give you an update on the annual report for LVFD.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I've got two reports. One of them is my monthly February report. And we had a total of four monthly meetings. We had 30 fire calls for the month of February. We had 132 EMT calls for a monthly total of 166. That gives us a year-to-date meetings and drills were nine. Year-to-date fire calls, 82. Year-to-date EMT calls was 251. Year-to-date training, miscellaneous training was two for a year total of 344 calls for the two months. My other report, I think you guys have this. Basically, it's my 2018, it's real short. And I apologize, should have done this a month ago, but we had some turnover in secretarial and she's, we got a new one and she's got back online. This is basically 2018 annual fire report. The Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department is comprised of 35 volunteer members, eight of which are certified emergency medical technicians. 23 have their firefighter one certificate and eight hold their firefighter two, one and two certificate. LVFD strives to provide the community with the best fire protection service possible. In 2018, the Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department responded to a total of 1,871 incidents. The charts below show a breakdown of the incident calls for 2018. That's the pie chart. The second page is basically just broke down per call. You can see the building fires, cooking fires, passenger vehicle fires. If you skip down to medical, assist EMS crew, motor vehicle with injured, injury. We have power lines down, just all kinds of different things and categories. And it's pretty self-explanatory. The last page is the following table highlights the average numbers of volunteers responding per incident by incident category. And as you can see on the fire, we're right about half our people. Medical, we're right about half. The hazardous conditions were a little over the personnel numbers. And again, it's pretty self-explanatory if you look at it. In addition to responding to incidents, LVFD held 52 mandatory drill meetings and performed an additional 26 public service activities and trainings throughout the year. The public service activities include participating at National Night Out, the pizza festival, the Christmas parade, the veterans parade, and numerous tours of the fire station for local schools and organizations. Services also included standing by at many of the Lemoore High School football games, performing fireworks, stand inspections, and additional work details at the fire station. LVFD was able to provide this level of service with an annual budget of $501,030. Within this year's CIP budget, the fire department was able to purchase a new medical rescue fire truck, which is number 13, that replaced the 1997 Ford fire truck. Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department takes pride in the ability to serve the great community that is Lemoore, appreciates the opportunity to do so. That's it, thanks, guys. Any questions or comments?
Yes, yes, sir. With the high school fireworks, you were saying something, you guys are dealing with fireworks there?
Not, not necessarily the fireworks themselves at the high school. We stand by for, for the football, for the football games. But, we also, Fourth of July, when the fireworks stands are set up-
Absolutely.
We, we inspect those to make sure that they have their signs up, they have their fire extinguishers. That's, that's what that is.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service. Frank Rivera?
Good evening, council. I have a couple of items to report on. You may remember back in November, we, the city initiated a 50/50 cost-sharing sidewalk repair program. The program's intent was to assist all property owners in the city of Lemoore assistance repairing sidewalk hazards, you know, that exist along their sidewalk or driveways. It also will support, if you have a tree that uproots the curb and gutter, we will assist them in repairing that. The, the total cost of assistance is $2,500. So, that's the max the city assists in these projects. We've had approximately about 18 applicants. 13 of those projects have been completed. The city has paid out about $19,000 to those 13 residents. We currently have, you know, the, the balance, which are either under review or under construction. So, I think it's off to a good start. The next thing is, we started a citywide striping project just before, by the end of summer. And this striping project was to take care of all the arterial and collector streets. And so, our strippers started the winter, we went into winter, wet weather, so they stopped. But, now they are back, they've been back about a week now. I think they've taken care of all the yellow. They're working on the white striping and then the next will be the stenciling. So, probably the next couple of weeks they'll be wrapped up. That's it.
I have a question, yes. What contributing, what is that, $2,500 you guys doing in working on them sidewalks? How much is doing one sidewalk, gutting out the tree? And if that family is gutting out a tree, how much is it going to be?
Well, they vary.
Estimate?
We, we allow the property owners to do their own work. If they do their own sidewalk work, then we're, we're actually giving them a valuation of $10 a square foot. If they get a contractor to do it, then we, we give, we pay them whatever the contractor is. We, we split that 50/50 up to $2,500. And that includes, you know, root, tree root removal. If the tree has caused the sidewalk to, to be raised or depressed, or replacement of the curb and gutter.
Very awesome.
Yes.
Good stuff, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going on to-
I've, I've got one. So, again, mayor and councilmembers. So, tomorrow I'll be attending a public event with Congressman TJ Cox. And the guest speaker is a gentleman from the USDA to talk about all the available USDA grants for, for our areas, including water, wastewater funds and a slew of other things. So, I'll be up in Sanger for that tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, consent calendar. Three dash one, approval minutes, regular meeting, March 5th, 2019. Three dash two, approval, letter of support vote, Protection Act AB 17. Three dash three, approval Transportation Development Act fund claims for fiscal year 2019 slash 20, Resolution 2019 slash 10. Three dash four, approval embatement of public nuisance and setting on public hearing, Resolution 2019 slash 11. Three dash five, approval purchase of new hook truck and two skids. Three dash six, approval, approval of job description in our salary ranges for city position, Resolution 2019 slash 12. Do I have, any councilmembers want to pull any of these items? Can I go to the public and call for Tom Reed?
Wants to pull three.
Not yet? Just pull it. Okay, I pulled that. That would be- That would be three dash two. And anything else? Can I get a motion from council? No. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar minus three dash two.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown. Do I get a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mr. Carries. Okay, now we're gonna go back to three dash two. Mr. Reed?
Tom Reed, ten sixty-five, in Lemoore, mayor, councilmembers. I stand in opposition to this letter because I don't think it's needed. Let me ask one question, Councilmember Billingsley. I reside in your district. Has anyone contacted you about this item?
No.
And I suspect that no one on this council's been contacted about this item. What I do suspect.
Not, not a resident, Mr. Reed, but somebody outside of the city.
Someone outside the city.
Correct.
What I suspect is someone from Mr. Assemblyman Salas's department or one of his reps contacted the city asking for this letter of, to, to agree with him on this issue. Now, if he needs a letter from the city of Lemoore and maybe Hanford and Corcoran to say this is the right thing to do, then maybe he's not so sure that it's the issue. Now, there are problems with the voting in this, in this state that needs to be addressed. The motor voter actor is, act as a disaster, run by a department that's really in trouble. And there are voters registered in this state that shouldn't be registered. And there are voters that probably are registered two or three times because they've moved and their rolls haven't been cleared up. This would be a piecemeal piece of legislation and voting in this state. And I would suggest that it's not gonna do any good whether you approve it or not, but I would recommend that you do not do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I apologize. I'm going to have staff come up and re-innovate on three dash two.
Okay. So, mayor and councilmembers. So, we were approached by Assemblyman Rudy Salas's office with a letter of support in AB seventeen. As previously passed by council, all letters of support need to come through the council. My brief understanding of the bill is there are, there's claims that there are employers out there that require and ask their employees to bring in their mail-in ballots and then pressure them into voting a certain way. So, the intent of the bill is described to me from Rudy Sal, Assemblyman Salas's office was this will help ensure that people are, can vote without feeling the pressures of an outside influence on who they're voting for.
Any other members of the public want to expound on this? I see there's none.
Real quick, Mr. Reed, did, did you understand it the same way?
Yes, I did. Also, there is a provision in the, in this state that a person can go to various places and collect mail-in ballots. For instance, nursing homes, those sort of facilities.
Ballot harvesting is what we're talking about.
That's right. And they can apply pressure to those people to vote a certain way. So, like I say, this is piecemeal legislation. If you wanted to attack voting in this state, then there needs to be something done that's gonna cover a number of issues, not just a piecemeal thing. And that, that would be my recommendation to Assemblyman Salas. Say, hey, when you come back with something that's serious, that's really gonna resolve some issues in this state as far as voting, then we'll support it. But just to do a piecemeal thing like this, I'm against it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more, any other comments by council? I see there's none. Any motions?
Make a motion to approve three dash two as the letter of support for AB seventeen.
Okay, as read.
As written.
As written.
Okay, I got one, a motion by Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown? Do I get a second? Looking for a second? Motion fails. Okay. Now we're going on to public hearings, section four. I see there's no public hearings, new businesses. Five dash one, report and recommendation, award contract for construction phase management service of Vanner Construction Management Industry, TTHM Compliance Order. Mr. Olson?
Yeah, I'm pulling it. Give me one second, mayor. Okay. So, so basically what this is, is we went out and requested several quotes to get some assistance to the city on the project management for the TTHM compliance.
Is it estimates?
No, no, we actually had, had, had a quote. So, the lowest bid came in from Vanner Construction Management. And what we'll be getting in this contract is about twenty hours of project management services to help us pick the design build team, watch out for the best interest of the city and interact with staff. Frank Rivera, when he was promoted up to the Public Works Director, we never backfilled his position as the Public Works Superintendent. So, we're kinda operating on a skeleton crew. And this is a, this, this project is gonna be in the twenty million dollar range. So, this is a, a nice insurance policy to make sure we, the best interest of the city is covered by the design builders and we help, have somebody to help guide us through this process. Vanner has done many design builds already. I personally have not done a design build, neither has, has Frank. So, the only one on staff that's done a design build is the Assistant City Manager and she did it on the other side of the aisle. So, little bit limited in our scope, but we feel like this will give us the best opportunity to deliver the, the quality product.
Thank you, sir. Could I ask you a question? How many quotes have you received?
I received two quotes for this particular one.
Two quotes?
Two quotes. On a professional service, we're, we're not required by the Public Contractors Code to bid it competitively. Professional services, we can go out and get. But I did grab a couple of quotes just for comps.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open this to the public. Anybody wanna expound on this? Okay, I'm, I'm moving back to council. How about council?
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Vanner, item five dash one.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion by Mr. Billingsley, a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going on to city council reports and requests, section six, six dash one. Mr. Brown?
The only thing I gotta brief out is that I attended last month's South Fork Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. And we have another one this Thursday, right here at five-thirty. Meeting starts at five-thirty, workshop at six. So, please attend. It's open to the public. And that's about all I have. I just wanna thank everybody for being here. Thank our staff and our police department, fire department, once again, for all your hard work. It's a team effort. So, we thank everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, so last month, I went to the Board Real Estate Committee meeting for KCAO. And they have three sites that they're either looking to purchase land or expand for office space. And they're also looking for possibly a, a future food bank location. They were uncertain as to the one, it was gonna be here in Lemoore, how long it was gonna last, so to speak. But that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Billingsley?
Yep, I, I don't have anything to report out on committees, but I did wanna thank Mariella for coming in. I think the town will support you and I'm glad that you were able to keep Yowzers open. I know I've definitely supported at least the last couple of weeks since you've been open. And now that you've opened up to the fire department, police department, there's probably already a line out there. So, thanks for doing that and thanks for being part of the community. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Well, I have a question, City Manager. How is it, let's see, I'm gonna say this. With the tree embatement, the tree committee, are we, did you look into that with the tree committee that I brought up last?
Yes, we did. And I aired that. If I'm not mistaken, it was disbanded, correct? It was disbanded several years ago, so there is no active tree committee.
Was there any kind of way we can get that back established? Pretty trees, pretty town.
Well, what they did is they, they eliminated the tree committee, but now it's at the discretion. There's, there's an approved tree list of what you can plant. There is procedures in place to pull a tree removal permit. So, if you wanna remove a tree, you have to say what you're gonna plant back and it's at the discretion of the Public Works Director to sign off on that. That's currently what we have in place.
Okay. And how about Kings County Voter Supervisors Event, it's gonna be at Tati Palace?
Yeah, the city county coordinators meeting is this Wednesday at six PM tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna go back into, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I agree with you. I, I really enjoy trees myself. Is, is there, is there any way we could start a new program to get some trees going in? Is, can we just look into it?
Go ahead.
I, it's been a few months ago, maybe a couple of years. I wanted to put a tree in the park strip in front of my home. And I looked at that list and there are some trees on that list that don't belong there. I mean, you're talking sixty-foot trees. And that list needs to be cleaned up.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna comment?
Yeah, I got one more comment. On, on that end, the Fresno Trees, it's a nonprofit. We've met with them. I know Frank and Jason Glick have met with them. And we actually got word last week they're going on our behalf to get a bunch of grant money to plant as many trees as we opt to in the city of Lemoore. And with that, I'll have to come back to council for an agreement and approval of an MOU. Because with these grant funds, as long as we supply a water source, they come in and plant them and get them in the ground. And the contract also covers the maintenance of those trees for the first two years. So, we're looking at areas like Fox Street, out at the BMX track, maybe some additional trees around the park areas and stuff like that. So, we're, we are definitely looking at ways to get more trees in town.
That's with that Cal Fire Grant, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The only thing, I, I used to be on the street tree committee. I was on there right before they disbanded it. The thing is, is on that listing, make a recommendation is, is maybe what we need to do is pass that through an arborist. Let somebody look at that listing. You know, what would be recommend, if I can give a recommendation to council to, you know, have that listing.
Counsel, at this point, before we get too much discussion going on this item, since it's not agendized, I would maybe recommend council provide direction to the city manager to bring it back at an agendized manner.
Make a, can I give a recommendation to council to go ahead and bring that up?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, the time is now eight o'clock, or eight oh one. We're gonna go into close session. We are now adjourned. You guys can stay here when we come back out. If you guys wanna wait here with the close session, if we elaborate, if there's anything to elaborate on. Thank you. God bless.